Okay, let's start the meeting to order and let's have our old calls, Jill.
Commissioner Agnes Barnarski.
Present.
Commissioner Dana Seivertson.
Here.
And Pete Hahn.
Here.
Commissioner John Commish.
Here.
Commissioner Steph Marcus.
Here.
I'm Commissioner Jill Moscow. Ed Madden is absent. We have a quorum.
He's on the way, though. Ed is, I think.
I'm here.
Nope.
Hey, there's Ed.
Yeah, he's a psychopath.
He's far out.
Ed.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, let's have the approval of the minutes of the board meeting of January nineteenth.
I make the motion that we approve the beautifully crafted minutes by Jill Moscow.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes approved. Let's move on to old business. Number one is volunteer workdays. So, uh, last workday, we're at, uh, the Slough, Marion Maple. We cleared a lot of the buckthorn. I'd say ninety-five percent, ninety-eight percent of all the buckthorn on that entire side. Had a nice bonfire. We, um, took down, there was a couple of snags that had fallen, so we took those. We actually, um, cut them up, cut them up. We burned some. We cut some into logs. And the next workday, uh, is gonna be at the Slough, on the other side, so, uh, hillside. We've had a nice turnout every single time for the last, I don't know, months, a couple of months. Does anybody wanna say anything about the workday, workdayers?
No, they've been well attended and, um, a lot of progress.
And a lot of enthusiasm, too.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun.
Um, this, well, yeah, I do wanna say something. This, um, this, uh, workday this Sunday, um, is on the Hillside Avenue side of the Slough. Um, it is the joint celebration of the PHNRC turning nine years old. Uh, we have a beautiful log cake coming with moss growing out of it, uh, from, uh, my daughter Jean-Vieb. And, um, we're also going to celebrate Valentine's Day as well, so should be a festive occasion, uh, a lot of fun, and hopefully everybody comes out.
Lot of love in the air.
It is.
Might be a little muddy, she's quite muddy, so.
I don't know, we got three days of forty degrees plus, so we'll see.
Alright, next is the press conference, probably, uh, library park district events.
Nothing new to report. Um, Nature Speaks is, uh, still just, um, where we are with our, um, speaker, Peter Cairns from, uh, Scotland. Um, there, nothing has been scheduled past that. We're talking to, um, the bee people and the park district and the library to try to set up a joint event where they wanna do a workshop and do a talk. Um, so we're trying to figure out how to coordinate all that at the same time, so. Um, that may or may not be the next event, so we'll see. Bird walks are scheduled? I'm sorry, what's that, Jill?
Sounds exciting.
Yeah, um, it could be. Um, could be very exciting. Um, but hands-on workshop is a pretty good deal. Um, the bird walks are scheduled for, um, May thirteenth and twenty-seventh. So they're quite a ways away, but, wow, we've had birds up the kazoo here.
Okay. Next is the Slough Boardwalk Project update status. Dana, you wanna get that?
Um, yeah, the, um, uh, we've been looking at, um, how we could possibly burn the, um, cattails in the winter and, uh, talked to, um, a crew up in Wisconsin who do that regularly. And, uh, what they do is because, you know, the relative humidity is too high to just do a regular burn, um, they cut it. They break it into a pile. They use a propane torch and really torch it up, and that's how they burn it, so.
When it's frozen.
When it's frozen.
So not this year.
So I don't think, unless we get another hard freeze, it's probably gonna roll over to spring to burn the cattails, and it'll probably be patchy again, so.
We'll try that whole winter burn maybe next year, the cattails.
Are you saying we would have to cut all that and pile them up?
Well, that's just, that's what they do when they burn in the winter because of, you know, the, the high relative humidity, and there could be snow on it and stuff, and so if you just try to light it, it's not gonna carry. So they, they cut it and they pile it all up in big piles, and then they officially heat up the piles with, uh, propane torches.
Which seems like a lot of work.
It is.
Seems like a ton of work.
A lot of work.
Um, where, in the spring, you can just put a torch to it and the whole thing goes up.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it didn't really do that last time we, where we burned them. Um, I don't know what was, what, what the deal was with that, but, man, that's what we're gonna try to do this time.
Alright.
I, I think what ends up happening is we've been, uh, displacing a lot of the cattails that have been on land, and so a lot of them are really, like, deep in the water, and so that's all we're left with, so the fire doesn't carry from the land to the cattails very well, you know? I, I think, but.
Yeah.
I know we can do it. We will do it in the spring.
I think when they're in the water like that in the winter, they probably wick that water up through the shafts as well somehow, so.
Yeah, that's true. But did you wanna say anything more about the boardwalk or?
Uh, no, the signs are in the works. Um, they will be giving me a production date, um, after we, um, approve everything. So probably another week, and we should be ready to, uh, um, run it by everybody and get approval, and then, um, off to go to production. We did receive, a side note, uh, the Pollinator Park signs are here. I know that's sort of jumping ahead a little bit, but we're right there. Uh, Agnes and I did meet with Mark, and, uh, we discussed the areas, um, where we wanted to, uh, put the signs, and he's got no problem with it. Um, he, even though we did talk to Tim and Heidi early in the summer, um, and, um, their house is directly in front of the welcome sign, um, he suggested that we just visit them again about it, and I think that makes sense, so.
Just make sure everybody's on board.
At some point, I'll, I'll do that again, um, 'cause it could move down a little bit further as well, so. And he also, um, said, "Go ahead and, next time we get a freeze, drop that big Siberian elm, uh, over at the Pollinator Park."
But I'm not sure we're gonna get, so we kind of missed opportunity.
Well, we don't know. We don't know.
That's fair. So your next year, it's my turn.
So that's it?
What was, what was Tim's wife's name? I didn't catch it.
Heidi.
Heidi? Okay, thank you.
The Shoreline Restoration Project twenty-twenty-two status.
Okay, that's me again, I guess. Um, the, uh, timing of this is when the interns are here. Um, John has got, uh, the North Finger slated for this.
It's on twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, twenty-twenty-three.
So it's twenty-twenty-two. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Um, and so, uh, John has got, the, the next area is where the severe erosion is, and it's almost, uh, land touching the road down on the North Finger. Um, we have a meeting on, I believe, the sixteenth of March. That's a sixty percent update on the MWRD project, and at that time, we should have a pretty good idea of where, um, those road modifications are going to impact the areas that we want to work, so.
Anyway, I think that we should avoid that finger because it's gonna be right there where they're doing things.
I wonder if we should, uh, I wonder if we should push on to the next section and then come back to that section the following year so that they do their roadwork.
And then we can act.
Don't get in the way of any kind of restoration work we're doing.
That's a great idea.
I mean, you know, it's, um, every bit of that shoreline that we haven't worked on is in desperate need, so. You know, it's, I, I prioritize as best as I could, but li- literally, there's, there's two or three other sections that could, that could go right.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
Yeah.
It's not a big deal if we shift it over to another section.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanna be conscious of where we are with the budget. Right now, we're currently nine hundred and seventy-six dollars over, um, on this year's allotment, um, and that needs to be made up out of next year's allotment, but we also have a lot of material in inventory. So really, that nine hundred some odd dollar number.
Just use it be a smaller section.
Yeah, it's, it's probably about.
Last year, obviously.
It's probably.
I think it'll be fine unless, you know, unless our extra materials cost that much more this year. I, I don't know what the prices are gonna be, but.
Oh, that's often known.
Yeah, I know. Um, but, uh, it should balance out relatively well, I would think.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Let's see.
Well, we have about, I'd say we're up to, I'd estimate about five hundred dollars worth of, of materials in inventory for next year's restoration.
Good calculation on the, the feet. You know, the feet, a restoration, materials and everything, and maybe we go under a little bit.
Yeah, what I wanna avoid is going over again on the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Okay, path, next is path maintenance at work sites. There really isn't any at the moment, so we'll just keep it on there.
I'd like to just say that the, the boardwalk's holding up really well with all these fluctuations in temperature and freezing and water and everything, you know, it's, um, it's hanging on really well. There's a couple of sections that are just slightly tilted and that, but we can adjust that in the springtime. But, um, it's looking really good.
Yeah, yeah, I'm impressed as well. It's very nice.
Yeah, it's a torsion box style of construction, and it's really stable, so should be fine. We'll see.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, next is the seed greenhouse program update. So, um, all the seeds are stratifying out in pots, and the greenhouse will probably be started first or second week of March. So putting some of that, half of them into the greenhouse, half of the ones that are stratifying. Uh, other than that, we still have twenty thousand plugs to plant, although half of those are sedges, so those are wetland sedges, so that we need to.
They're going into the reclaimed area for, um, the boardwalk, or they're going into the, the restoration of the shoreline, um, and later on in the summer.
They'll be fine hanging on like that. Um.
So you're gonna grow how many this year of other species?
Only twenty thousand.
Okay.
This year. That still adds up to forty thousand, twenty thousand plants and another twenty thou-
Well, do something, will you?
How many, how many do we grow last year?
Forty plus.
Forty thousand, but we planted twenty thousand, so there's twenty thousand left over. And so if we grow twenty thousand, actually, it's not a bad idea, 'cause the twenty thousand are really great. They're like second-year plants, they're really robust, they're like strong and healthy, and we get to put those in the ground now. And so whatever we decide to put in the ground from this year is fine, but then they can also overwinter. It's really nice to have second-year plants, I have to admit.
Yeah, maybe we should just have a rolling second-year plant, twenty thousand plants, and then your yard, it'd be great.
That is the only bad thing, is that they take up a lot of space, so like the whole backyard is plants, yes, but.
As long as they live on its side for a minute, it's fine.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on, spring prescribed burns, we briefly touched on that. It's not time yet, although Cook County Forest Preserves burned last week for two days.
Yeah, they did.
It was just like the perfect timing, everything was dry, I mean, dry, relatively dry, so they had choice locations, obviously sixty thousand acres they have, so they could choose an area that, that, there's no way that anything would've burned here over those two days.
Yeah.
So we're still waiting, but I think it's probably gonna be earlier than usual, based on, I don't know, based on really nothing, but except that the red-winged blackbirds are singing already.
My groundhog saw his shadow this year, so I don't know what the, you know, the weather's supposed to go a little longer, I think.
Yeah, who knows? Well, it's not time yet, but, um, you know, March, March.
Mark insists that we're still gonna have another freeze to drop that element at the Pollinator Park, so.
But we'll see, you know, it's all up to the weather, but we're ready for the, for everything. Um, and then I think you touched.
Yeah, we've already touched on the sign.
Yeah, we already talked about the Pollinator. So we'll move on to new business then. The MacArthur Junior High School Science Fair, Dana, or did you like?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, it was a lot of fun. There was a lot of great kids, um, as usual, really interested, that's why they're there, for the science fair. So we spoke to a lot of families, a lot of kids, a lot of adults. Uh, we handed out, you know, informational things. We discussed, we had questions, because they have to ask for a question, or they have to do something to get their stamp. So it was all about monarchs and pollinators and, um, habitat, and so it was really fun. I enjoyed, I enjoyed it a lot, you know, we, we sometimes get really great volunteers from those events.
Yeah, they have, uh, uh, it's, it's really an interesting synergy that they have at that school right now. They, uh, they have, um, a, a new principal as of last year, who's, uh, got a, a very large track of land up in, uh, Crystal Lake, and he's well into all this restoration stuff. And so he's very enthusiastic about all of this. And then they got a new, um, assistant principal, um, that we met for the first time that night, and she's just really gung ho about everything, and, um, so it's a, it's a real nice, you know, when you couple it up with all the science teachers, it's just, it's really terrific, um, so.
Yeah, and if I just may add something here, I know we're talking about MacArthur Science Fair, but I don't see anything else about the educational part. Um, maybe just a little update, just a few days ago, Medea, about from Wheeling High School, uh, we, we had a, we actually went over there to do a presentation last week. They asked us to do a presentation, and so they are going to do their field trips again, like they do every year. They've done it every year for, I don't know, the last five years, where they come out in the bus, they walk around the slough, we do a whole educational excursion, it's ninety minutes, it's a lot of fun. They help us out, too. They, you know, they pull garlic mustard or do whatever needs to be done.
Transplanting.
Transplanting, we've had them. So it's really, really neat, because Medea told us, or Miss Pot told us, that, uh, next semester, she has twice the amount of students that are interested in a class. So she's gonna have four classes instead of two classes, which is really great. And so they, the, the, the students, um, are saying that the reason they're signing up is mostly for the field trips. Those field trips are the field trips that come out to see us, so I'm, I'm really excited about that. Last time, they had one of the teachers come out, and I think we do a really great job with the educational experience for them, so I'm excited that more kids are interested and signing up for these classes and coming out to see us at the Slough. But it will have to be an all-day event, 'cause right now, it's been like a morning, a Wednesday morning, you know, every month. Now it's gonna be like the whole day, 'cause the kids are gonna come in the morning, and then she's gonna bring another group in the afternoon. So if anybody's interested in doing that on Wednesdays.
When does that start?
Um, she has dates starting in March, so she basically has like almost every other Wednesday, March through May.
Oh.
Yeah.
Though March is pretty early, isn't it?
I know. She said if the weather permits.
Yeah.
Like end of March, so, and then I'll, yeah, so I'll give you the.
That's, that's coming and going all day long, or just in the morning, or what?
No, it should, what, what she does is she brings out two classes at a time, but now she has four classes, so it's two groups. And they're, they're there for ninety minutes, 'cause they join two periods together, so that they have more time to do the, um, the, um, field trip. So she gave us a choice, do you wanna stretch us out over two days, and we said, "No," because Agnes is off on Wednesday. So she'll bring one group in the morning, break, and then the other group in the afternoon, so.
So I have the dates. So March fifteenth, April fifth, April nineteenth, and May third, and I'll email this to you guys. Those are the dates that she's been approved for. She's also been approved for March first, if somehow we get a nice warm spell. But the kids are really excited to come out and see, and it's, it's been really great, you know, and she, um, adds all of these educational things to it, like they actually have to work for it. They have papers to do, and they have to learn their plants, and that's, I think it's great.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
I might be able to join you for the afternoons on Wednesdays, but not, not the mornings, don't fit my schedule.
Sure, anytime. Yeah, anytime. It's a lot of fun. And so then we'll move on to the Eagle Scout Project update. Dana, you spent the day with them.
Well, I did, but I couldn't have done it without John and Monty, I'm telling you. It was way too much for one, one old guy to take care of.
How many kids came?
There were twenty kids. Um, they, uh, the, what we did is pre-cut all the parts, um, and then there, the idea was that they would break out in stations and then do whatever the detailing needed to happen to the part before they could be assembled. Um, they went through four dozen donuts in like five minutes. It was just amazing.
Young boys.
Young boys, but, um, at the end of the day, you know, it was, uh, a little bit rough around the edges, but, um, they did a great job at the end of the day. The, um, we have ten complete, totally finished, uh, seed processing stations. I need to tweak them just a little bit, um, minor, minor tweaks, uh, to make them fully work, but, uh, the best part is all the sawhorses are knocked down, so they're just, it's a small stack of parts, and, and that's the end of it. They had a really great time. They really appreciated it. I didn't know this at the time. Why, I don't know, but that, that troop is from the city. They, they're from.
Yeah.
Completely.
They're from Old Town.
Yeah.
And, uh, there's, it's a conglomeration of, uh, schools that kinda gather in that troop in Old Town. And, um, in talking with the boys, um, they really enjoyed coming out here, and, 'cause they said, like, a lot of their Eagle Scout projects are, like, painting the insides of schools and things like that. And they, they found a lot of relevance to, uh, to this project, and I think they felt good getting out of the city. A lot of them talked about, you know, potentially coming back with different projects and stuff. So that, we had a really good conversation with them. The other thing that was good to see is what some, you know, we take for granted is, um, a lot of these kids don't know how to use tools. And so half the time, we were showing them how to just, you know, properly hammer things and screw things and stuff like that, and, um, so I think they, they walked away feeling pretty fulfilled with, uh, with the project. It was, it was good. It was a lot of work, but it was good.
Yeah, a real shout-out again to John and Monty. I mean, their patience was, um, simply, to say the least.
And you heard, John, that you took them on a walk, too.
I did, yeah.
That was really the best part.
Yeah, that's great.
I took them down the boardwalk and told them that this, this could be a project you could do. Um, so they were blown away that that was an Eagle Scout project. Um, so they all think an Eagle Scout project is a one-day thing, one and done, and, you know, there's a lot more to it than that a lot of times, so. Um, yeah, it was good.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, John, and thank you, Monty. Um, it was, it was, and the end of the day, um, it's really nice to have those extra seed processing things. You know, we only have seven boxes. We had thirty people last time, so this changes the equation big time, so, um, more seed faster.
Yeah. Okay, then let's move on to the park district and city budget status update.
Oh, yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. I was just gonna say, we know that the, uh, the park district budget has been approved. Um, so that's, uh, seventy-five hundred dollars plus up to a thousand for the, um, summer camp, depending on how many days we do. City budget has still, um, has to go through city council, so.
But we haven't.
Yeah, we submitted it, yeah. It's long ago. So, John, anything you wanna add to that?
That's, that's drawn up and submitted, yeah?
Yeah.
Twenty-twenty-three budget, yeah, okay. Um, no, just moving on to our budget numbers, I sent the, laid out. Thanks to Peter Falconi for, um, sending it out, the updated, um, part just a little while ago. Um, bottom line is, um, we're sitting on about two thousand dollars still for the, uh, to the end of the fiscal year. Do we have that earmarked for, uh, anything, um, Dana or Agnes?
Um, I know operational supplies, we need to catch up on, especially, um, uh, chainsaw blades for, um, all the sawing that we've been doing. There's incidentals that will, um, um, be sucked up easily. Um, there's some, uh, signage out. I, I got a, a couple of things that I, I've gotta, uh, give a shout-out to. First of all, Chris Wood, our volunteer, uh, Dr. Chris Wood, made another five hundred dollar contribution this year, and so thank you, Chris. Um, i- i- the guy is amazing. I mean, he comes and he works like a dog, and, and then he gives you money on top of it, so.
Brings his friends and.
Forces all the people who work for him to come out, so he's, he's one in a million, and I just absolutely love the guy. Um, the second thing is, um, on the cost of the materials, which was like five hundred and twenty dollars, uh, at Home Depot, Home Depot made a contribution of fifty percent of, on those materials.
That's huge.
We paid like two-fifty, um, I think.
You're talking about the materials for the.
For the Eagle Scout project.
Okay.
So a big shout-out to, uh, Home Depot as well.
Yeah, that was.
And they're, I'm giving them a shout-out in the, um, journal as well, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, there's, you know, materials, materials, materials.
Yeah, I figured there's plenty to, you know, stock up on, um, with the remaining in the budget, so.
There's one, um, I, I know there's like one, um, one auger that needs to go on for service, too, so.
And then maybe like a couple pairs of loppers. We really have to, uh, after this season, maybe we can, uh, do some schedule, some maintenance for those loppers, you know? Or, yeah. Make sure we put them away for the, you know, after this season, and they're all nice.
Either sharpener, do we?
Yeah, sharpener.
Yeah, we have a grinder and, um, a, a buffer.
Okay.
All that stuff.
It would be nice just, you know, after the season to have them all put away, ready to go for the fall, or whenever we need them. But I think we still need a couple pair of loppers, 'cause we've had such a big turnout that it's like we're down to the last lopper, and there's like one in the basket, so. I think a couple pairs of loppers, too. Okay, um, then moving on to city civic meetings and PHNRC representation. Jill?
Sure. Well, you've already mentioned that the park district budget has been approved, the park district code of conduct has been approved. That will be printed and posted at park district sites, and I already provided you with, uh, the context. And I think that we should print that and just hand it out to our volunteers. I mean, they're very respectful, but they should be informed, too.
Yes.
Uh, the block party date has already been set for June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, and citywide, the Arlington Countryside Pipe and Pump Station will be, uh, ready, uh, this month, February.
Away we go.
You know, instead of printing that up, um, to give to people, because it'll just get read and then thrown out or, uh, used otherwise, I, I would suggest that we just post it in a prominent place, like outside of, um, a garage where we do a lot of our work, and then have it posted on our website, too. And, and.
The other option is we just print it out and bring it to, or just print out a couple of copies, and when people are signing in on Sunday, they just read it.
Yeah, maybe have one copy laminated and, you know.
Yeah.
I just won't give it out to, once people read it, what are they gonna do with it?
Yeah. Okay, you're right. Yeah, let's do that. We'll just mention it the next workday, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, good. Then moving on to the annual plan review.
Alright, so you guys saw the start of the annual plan. Um, I desperately trying to finish it off by the end of this week. Um, probably it's gonna go to next week, and then at that point, um, everybody will take a look at it, and we'll discuss what has to happen at those sites and, uh, prioritize, and then once we have the annual plan, uh, then we can start thinking about strategic planning as well. So that's the next step, but this is the first step, so.
But it's sort of like a five-year plan, it's like an annual to-do over.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's annual tasks at each of the sites.
That can be put into a five-year.
It can be plugged into a five-year plan.
Alright.
Any questions about what you received and looked at? Anybody have time to look at it yet?
I have not had time to look at it, I apologize.
I, no, it's alright, 'cause it went out really late.
Except it's all written down, and it's all basi- it's basically just timed out and written down, like what the per- what the things are that need to happen at these sites.
And what season it's available in.
Right, and she, obviously, we prioritize or based on, you know, like, hey, if Maravan ever has any garlic mustard anymore, then, you know, like that. It's just, then it's just, uh, maintenance, kind of like watching out for garlic mustard instead of actually pulling it that year, so they change, of course, a little bit.
But, but once you have all this in place, then you can sit back and look and say, "Okay," then it becomes really easy to plan what the workday is, because, you know, you've got similar tasks at all these sites, and there, that need to happen between here and there, you know where you're gonna be, so. Uh, it's a little bit more structured to the planning, so.
Yeah, a lot more structured, because otherwise, it's sort of like all in your head, and, you know, and for, for instance, in my head, and for instance, a Siberian elm didn't get dropped, because, you know, it was, it was frozen. There was freezing temperature, but we had another workday elsewhere, and we didn't, you know, do that, um, but.
We'll get there.
Yeah.
Dana, can I back up a little bit and talk about our budget for the coming year? So we've talked about essentially what we need, but we, we haven't discussed any figures yet, correct? We, I think we have to assess how much we need and.
No, we did that like two meetings ago. I, I sent out the budget for, the budget proposal that went to the city. It was like, uh, two board meetings ago. I think November, maybe even.
Yeah, so far away.
It's a long time ago.
But it was sent to the city?
Hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Joe, Joe has it all. I mean, everybody looked at it and said, "Okay," so I wouldn't have sent it out unless there was agreement that, uh, what we're talking about, so.
Alright, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I'll resend it to everybody so they can refresh.
Thank you.
That's three months, it's a long time.
In the budget that, uh, John sent around, it mentions the, um, park district amount? Is that? I thought it was more for some reason.
Park district.
The upcoming budget is more.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The amount that was approved is more. The amount that was approved is more.
Yeah, this is the twenty twenty, yeah.
Okay.
It's like the budgets that were.
Last year.
Got it.
It still says twenty-three because we're, we still, the budget is still until April. Alright, then, any announcements to the public?
Seth?
No?
May I mention something about coyotes, I read a very interesting article in the Daily Herald a few weeks ago. They said that this is mating and breeding season, so there's more um, activity. And they said to be especially cautious if you have a small dog and you walk the small dog, that you should vary your route. Because coyotes would actually think to themselves, okay, they're coming around the bend, this is the time that they usually come. And they would plot to be there and perhaps do some harm, so just to be aware that this is mating and breeding season. And they said emphatically, you do not feed coyotes, do not try to be friendly with them. Could be dire uh, consequences.
Let them be wild and scary of us, yes. Okay.
You have no visitors?
Nope, alright, then.
I make mostly a journey.
Hey, all in favor?
Alright.
Bye.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, all.
Thank you.